Line over here.
Well.
Morning, everyone. This is the Delaware County Commissioners Meeting. It's Monday, June 5th, 2023. The time is 9:04. Let's open the meeting with the pledge.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Can you call the roll, please?
Yes. Mr. Henry.
Here.
Mr. King.
Here.
Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
All right. Under appointments, we have the Creed Board appointment, Brian Sapp.
Yes. Under the Creed Board, this is a community revitalization economic district. This is a board you have six members on and six appointments. The governor has one, lieutenant governor has one, and workforce development has one. Five of those six have to have specific job duties and responsibilities. When you made your appointment in January, we were only assumption that Doug White was still with First Merchants, and he had retired from First Merchants, and so we didn't have a banker representative. So we needed to have a banker representative. Mr. Sapp is at First Merchants, and he's the one that Brad recommended. We would keep Mr. White because he has familiarity and has done great work, but we would need a banker representative.
I'll make a motion. We appoint Brian Sapp.
Second.
A motion to appoint Mr. Sapp. And a second roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
One-year term. These are all one-year terms.
I got one other one. Our ECI Planning District, we need one more appointment on it.
Okay.
Rob Kiesling from the power company is interested. He already shows up to the meeting as a liaison. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Rob Kiesling to the ECI PD.
Second.
A motion to appoint Mr. Kiesling. A second roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Is that one-year term?
Yeah, I believe those are one-year terms.
Yes, those are one-year terms.
All right. Next, we'll go down to presentations. We have Lisa with Recovery Cafe.
Good morning. My name's Lisa Rosine. Can you hear me okay?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Going to start off with a short video and followed by another short presentation.
In the world, you know, people tend to put you down, you know, and when people tell you that you would never amount to anything, and you hear that so many times, you're going to start believing it because you've been told that so many times. But here, you know, we show, we show one of the people that there is hope. There is hope for it, any and every one.
So Recovery Cafe is a love-based community where people can find safe, a safe place to land, and it's a place where people who are experiencing all sorts of hardships, poverty or substance abuse disorder or domestic violence, they may be experiencing homelessness or hunger or grief or any sort of mental illness. And it's just a place where they can find each other and feel human, feel respected, feel loved, and also practice giving love and giving respect and practicing forgiveness.
To help me deal with the root causes of why I wanted to use. And so I will, after I started to grow in that, I started to being happy about my recovery and not having to hide, not having to Band-Aid anything up. So I was truly dealing with joy and not a watered-down happiness that brought shame in the end.
When you're coming off of drugs, it's scary for some people. It's scary for me. So being able to feel welcome and like you're accepted for who you are instead of who you could be, it gives you an area of comfort so that you can grow.
I think one thing that draws in a lot of curiosity is free coffee, free meal, free warm place to come be safe, play games, whatnot. So I think that is what draws in a lot of people. And when they get here, I think a lot of people might be surprised that they're treated with love and respect. Like a person who has a lot of money, who frequents a fancy restaurant, and someone says, "Oh, hello, Ms. Rosine. So happy to see you. Let me take your coat." And they just, they get special treatment, you know, because they have money or because, you know, they have prestige. And we want people to feel that even if they don't have any of those things because they deserve it because they are human.
So yes, they provided a meal. They provide these classes. They provide sober social events, but it also gets, gives you a chance to sit there and connect with the people around you. And a lot of times in early recovery even is like some people find it really hard to do so. So that's what this place gave me a chance to do. And at first, like we have circles, so it's like a weekly check-in. For the first month or two, I wasn't even able to sit through a whole circle. I would be in there for maybe five, 10 minutes, share my part, and have to skedaddle and run, literally.
We are going to connect with love in ourselves and others. We're going to show respect. We're going to cultivate compassion. We're going to practice forgiveness. We're going to encourage growth, and we're going to learn how to give back with those guiding principles in all our affairs. And so, and so if you come down here, don't be ashamed. Let it grow on you.
When I first came, I was welcomed, you know, with open arms, you know, by the staff. And then I saw that, you know, that the cafe was a community like family.
That gets me. I'm sorry. So again, my name is Lisa Rosine. I am the new executive director of Recovery Cafe Muncy. I'm also a person in long-term recovery. And in fact, this week, I get to celebrate 13 years of sobriety. I'm very excited to be here this morning to share with you what we are doing just a few blocks away from here, right here in downtown Muncy. I hope that that video gave you a sense of the dramatic impact that we're having in the lives of our struggling community residents. In addition to building a sense of community with our recovering residents, we also provide peer recovery support circles to build accountability and transparency. We provide school for recovery classes to learn new life skills. We have pro-social events to practice connecting with peers in a healthy setting. We have peer recovery coaching to navigate the complications of early recovery. And all of these things are provided at no cost to our struggling community members. The cafe model is one that is nationally supported for the first two years of operation as local funding is established. We are no longer financially supported by our national network, and so we need local support. To sustain this lifesaving resource, we are seeking your support of $25,000 for 2023 and your consideration for similar support in 2024 and 2025. Recovery Cafe, along with 13 local agencies who have provided letters of support, feel that this would be an appropriate use for the national opioid settlement, as many of our members are overcoming the horrendous battle of opioid addiction. Recovery Cafe Muncy is in our third year of operation, and we are growing in membership. Although we are currently only operating with two staff members, we recently extended our days of operation to four days a week, where we see an average of 20 to 30 guests each day. And many of these guests are in a state of crisis and mental instability. Our limited, our limited staff ratios presents a safety concern. With your support, we will sustain our cafe programming and hire a third peer recovery coach to further support our community members. We will continue to make dramatic impact on those struggling with substance abuse and other hardships and help move them from a place of addiction and chaos into a place of recovery and contribution to our community. I have provided each of you with a copy of our brochure and our flyer, this request, a detailed budget, and 13 letters of support from local agencies. I thank you so much for your time and your consideration this morning.
Lisa, so glad that you were able to attend today. And I loved your film. Whoever put that together did a very nice job. And congratulations on your 13 years. I do have one question. You know, I'm a big supporter. And what, is there an age limit? Because it's mostly adults.
It's all adults, 18 and up.
18 and up. Okay, thank you. And, and people can just go for lunch and no questions asked. So we hope some of these people stop in sometime and visit you because it's just such a good program. And thank you so much for attending today.
Thank you. All right. We'll move on to contracts and agreements for approval. We have a bid opening for the renovations at the health department. John?
Yes, I've got five bids here that were received, and I'll just open them in a random order. I've got first Frederick's Inc. out of Pendleton, Indiana. Their base bid is $565,000. Alternate one is $16,140 for exterior windows. Alternate two, emergency generator, $15,714. Days of completion, 120 days. And next I have Atlin Construction of Muncy. Their base bid is $416,100, 416,100. Alternate one for exterior windows, $11,525. Alternate two, emergency generator, $5,700. I've got a bid here from Pride Mark. Their base bid is $388,800. Alternate wind, alternate number one exterior window, $16,480. Alternate two, emergency generator, $11,880. And their date of completion is 90 working days. For Atlin, their working day, days of completion was 122. Next I have for True Building, I think they're from Muncy. Their base bid is $452,374, 452,374. Alternate one exterior windows, $10,220.68. Alternate number two, the emergency generator, $9,470.46. Days of completion, 63 days for substantial, 77 days final punch complete. Then I have a bid from White Oak Commercial Group. White Oak Commercial Group is from Indianapolis. Their base bid is $596,000. Alternate one exterior windows is $33,300. Alternate number two, emergency generator, $29,000. They didn't tell me, I didn't put down here how many days of completion. So those are all four bids. I would recommend that the commissioners take these under advisement. Allow Jamie to, Jamie Bane at the health department, take a look at them, and then give a report back on his recommendation.
So move.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Thank you. Next, we have a letter of understanding, State Road 332 project. Angie?
Morning, Commissioners. Indot reached out to me a few weeks ago to let us know they have an upcoming project on State Road 332. They will be closing it for 45 days between 700 and 800 West. They plan on opening, they're closing July 5th and open by August 14th. They are asking your approval or your rejection of the unofficial detour, which is along County Road 700 West, West Jackson Street, and County Road 821.
So when this all come up, come up as a surprise. We didn't know this project was going to happen. They forgot, forgot to notify us. So in an effort to try to get paid for the damage that this will do to the unofficial detour, we'll need to fly that with the drone. Kyle, we need your assistance with photographs. Angie's office is going to work. I asked her to do a traffic count for those roads now, and then we'll do one after the closure. See how much traffic increases on that unofficial detour. So we'll try to, we may get some, put some no truck signs installed on some of the other roads to try to keep the semis off some of the other roads. That's kind of where we're at with it. So you're going to have Kyle fly some of the roads that's... Yeah, around it, too. Jason, do it. That way, if they get off and they tear them up, we at least have... Yeah, yeah.
Angie is in that working real hard to get the traffic, the semis off at Delville in 28.
They will sign their detour, but you know, people like to ignore the detour signs and try to find the shortest way to get there. So Indot has us declare an unofficial detour. I mean, I can't list every single road in that area.
Right.
The most likely route someone would use to do a shortcut. So we feel this would be the one.
And then like just behind the, they're on 332 behind that first fill-in station on the east. As you get up, there'll be some big blockage for semis, maybe.
I can send you their signage plan.
Okay, thank you. So they can turn around in the park maybe before they...
Yeah, that's the line.
Yeah, that'd be right.
So what's your, what's your pleasure on the unofficial detour? I don't like any detours, but if we don't, if we don't pick one... Because last time they did a detour, I think it ended up costing us more money than what they wanted to give us. It was. And we never got a dime out of it. So you're also going to do what you've got to do.
Of course. That thinks about Tillison, and they'd have to come clear down to Tillison almost with some of their detours.
I guess Indot will only detour along State Road.
Well, that's where 33...
Unless there's no choice.
I mean, that's where 332 starts on the east end, though, Tillison.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Tommy?
Yeah, I'm going to do my best to be out there and document every single thing that happens when it happens. I talked to Jeff about having the sheriff's department give me call, you know, give me calls, Troy calls whenever incidents, accidents happen. I'm going to try to go overboard this time because if we don't, we will get nothing again. And I don't know. I'm not happy with it. We have to do it. I wish we would have known ahead of time because I would have liked to have talked to them into, I know there's, what, Angie, is slip liners and a bridge rehab.
And a structural replacement.
Okay. Is it all in one phase?
Yes.
Okay.
Doing it within 45 days.
Okay. I just think in the future, we need to try to talk to Indot ahead of time on one lane, you know, cut it down to one lane. I know they don't want to do that, but it's going to cause us a lot of problems. And we can't, with the price of everything, we cannot afford to happen to us again what happened last time. So I don't know what our recourse is, but we're going to be more prepared this time. I mean, I'm going to go overboard, document every single thing, so.
We'll get it. Kyle and John's group will help us good.
Yeah. So I think this time here, we're going to be a little more prepared. I don't know if it'll work out in the long run, but we're going to be prepared. Also, on some of these corners, which I'll talk to you commissioners later about this, maybe barricading something off with some pillars or something because they're going to tear a lot of yards up and stuff like that. So I'll talk to you guys, see what legally, you know, we can, can't do on that also.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right. So we have a motion for approval and a second roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Thank you. Next, we have the Lily Platt Action Land Surveyors.
Good morning. We're representing the Lily Platt that is in Mount Pleasant Township. Property is on the east side of 800 West and on the north side of 25 South, just south of Division Road, if that helps you get some bearing as to where it is. These are six lots with the potential to build the homes. And we have gone through their plating. We have approval. We have their signatures. We just need to now dedicate those road right-of-ways, both on 800 West and 25 South.
So move.
Reagan. Motion for approval and a second roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have BIS Digital.
Emily? Yes, I have some stuff to hand out to you. So I want to first thanks James, Emily Anderson Court Administrator. I want to first thank James for reaching out to me after the council meeting. What you have in front of you was what we presented to council, which was the first quote from BIS to upgrade our courtroom because of all the problems we're having with the equipment, which they still can't figure out why we can't get the Wi-Fi portion to work with evidence presentation. They're out there this week working on it, but the, what it boils down to is the solution is to hardwire it in, so we're not relying on Wi-Fi to present evidence. But the back portion is the new quote, which is 16,000 compared to the 26,000. So I did find it in my budget, but that would take all my extra funding away so that I would not have any cushion. And James contacted me and said that there was some money in the ARP monies that is in the infrastructure. So I'm requesting that we use that money out of ARP. The total quote is $16,974.75, and that takes care of all five courts. So each court is $3,394.95 to hardwire. And what that means is they take cabling from the unit that presents the evidence to each attorney table. And so the attorneys would plug in rather than trying to log on to the system through Wi-Fi. They also have to put in a switch because we don't have enough ports on our equipment to then, where we can then switch from attorney table to attorney table so that they're presenting the evidence. So it's just a lot of, it's not a lot of equipment, it's a lot of manpower putting it in because they already have their runs and everything there.
Yeah, for watching the council meeting last week, and Emily got up and spoke, and was talking about this. I reached out to her and explained to her that we do have a building maintenance within the ARP that we could cover this with. So, and I spoke to the other commissioners about it and also John Brooke, and we're able to do that. So I would make a motion to go ahead and approve this for the courts.
Second.
I have a motion to approve the agreement with BIS Digital. A second roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Emily, I didn't see anything in here for BIS to teach us older attorneys how to use this stuff, huh?
There's not. That would be me, unfortunately. Yeah, I do all the technology with that. Our IT is not even involved because our contract is with BIS, the courts. So if you have any issues, I'm coming into the courtroom. Some of the court staff know how to do that, but it's mostly me. I do want to, yeah, I do want to ask for my claim, which fund do I use? Do you know?
You would use Fund 8950-321.
321?
Yep.
Thank you. And I do want to just publicly thank the commissioners for helping the courts with the ARP funding. If it hadn't been for the commissioners, we would be really hitting the county general with, with more money this past year and this year. Jury trials have really gone up. Our psych fees have gone up, but because the ARP funding for the jury trials, it has saved us from having to come back for county general money. So thank you again for helping us with all of that this past year.
Thank you.
Emily, the one that you provided me.
I have, I have one for it. Mr. Henry, assign.
Thank you.
All, all of them. I'll hand it back to you.
So this one is void.
That's just a copy of what I'm presenting, what he has to sign. You'll need, yeah, I'll just need a copy of it to send to him. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Hugh Smith Service Agreement. Brandy?
Good morning, Commissioners. Brandy Ingraham, the Plan Commission, and I have Kylene Swackhammer with me as well. Hugh Smith was our principal planner in the Plan Commission until he retired last year after about 40 years, 45 years actually of service. Kylene is our new principal planner. She has been able to step into that role quite nicely. She unfortunately only had a few months with Marta to learn some of those things. Hugh has been very helpful, phone calls, guiding her and things that she needed with deadlines, things like that. He's even come in a few times. What this agreement would do would be to allow us to continue that partnership with him for the foreseeable future, to help her with some of those documents, but to compensate him for his time as well. This would be out of our comp plan fund, so it would not be coming out of county general. So we do have the funds for that. So this is just your blessing to do that and to know that'll come through in claims.
Well, we are glad that he has agreed to do this and with your loss.
Yeah. Hugh is very knowledgeable and very friendly and wants to help us however he can. So we want to compensate for that.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve the agreement with Mr. Smith. And a second roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have ordinance for second reading, ordinance number 2023 015, creating a new fund for local public health service. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion to approve the ordinance. And a second roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. All right. Next, we have the payment of claims of $2,266,303.28 and payment of ARP claims of $33,955.05.
So move.
Second. A motion to pay the claims. And a second roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. And we have a person signed up. I'm going to say it's maybe Yenser, but it's hard to read. Is that correct?
My name. Thank you. Rick Yenser, newsman and author. I came to my attention last week that Santar District signed a contract with the County Wastewater District. with the County Wastewater District on handling wastewater. While they implied that our rates might go down, I remember a couple of years ago, the county raised our rates 40% during the pandemic to borrow yet more money to rebuild the old Westbrook Comax sewer. I've been up here before, and I've mentioned that over the years, over the 40 years that that district was created, a tax base should have been assigned to it because borrowing money and incurring debt, whether it's on utility customers or taxpayers, isn't the way government should run. So I'm hoping that we're gonna see some reduction in our utility rates out there. I think they went up 40% a couple of years ago, we appealed but lost. And again, you know, this affects thousands of utility customers in Rorton, Delaware, Delville, and Westbrook Comax. And I'd like a little more delineation too of why you spent a half a million dollars on a building over there for the Health Department. That seems like an excessive cost. And I hope you get the work out on this highway closure because they pulled, the state pulled the same stunt up here in 28, closing 28 down between 69 and over near Alexandria. I thought they tried to work with local government, but you know, that carries a lot of semi-traffic for all those boxes down on Nebo and Morrison, so good luck.
Thank you.
Yeah, I skipped the minutes. We have the minutes for approval for last meeting.
So move.
Second.
A motion to approve the minutes and a second rule call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Tannenring?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Thank you, if there's no other business, make a motion to recess.
Second.
Oh, I didn't do department heads or elected officials either, did I, John? I'm trying, I'm trying to get this, I'm trying to get this over.
I'm easy. Morning Commissioner, John Cattino, Emergency Management. I just wanted to give you guys a heads up. We, if you, I think I spoke to a couple of guys. We were awarded that grant for a conference to attend, that conference is this week. So myself, my Deputy Director Corey Kissick, Captain Greg Michael, and Kyle Johnson are all attending a hazmat conference in Baltimore. We leave tomorrow. We'll have people on, on call for EMA. My Office Manager still will be here this week too. So if you guys need anything, you can still reach out to my office. And we have people on call to assist the Sheriff's Office or whoever with, with traffic control needs and whatnot, so. So we'll be in Baltimore this week and we'll return on Sunday, back in the office on Monday.
And you have hazmat individuals available as well?
I believe Director Ashley has some people in place to be on call for Captain Michael, so we should have that covered as well, so.
Good.
Anyway, just want to give you guys a heads up.
Good.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other department heads or elected officials? I apologize, Tommy got up there and started talking and threw me off. All right, hearing none, we have a motion to recess and a second, rule call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Ms. Tannenring?
Yes.
We're recessed.
Recession.